Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the first Planning Commission meeting of 2015. I'm Ted Tucker. I'm sort of as President of the Planning Commission. Joining me today are Commissioners Cronzer, Bender, Brown, Lipke-Pier, Gusselman, and Forni. At this time, please be sure that all your electronic devices are turned to silent, which I will do too. The first item of business is to approve the actions from the meeting of December 1st, 2014. Moved and seconded to approve those actions. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, those are approved. Our next item is to approve the agenda. That's to sort the five items that are on our agenda on the blue sheet that you might have seen on the table outside. I'll go through these one by one, and we'll determine if we will put that item on the consent agenda, which means we pass it as recommended by the staff report without further discussion, or we continue it, or we discuss it and have a public hearing with it. So, item number one is a set of street renaming's in the Cedar Riverside neighborhood. Is there anyone here wishing to speak about these street renaming's? Otherwise, it will go on the consent agenda, and we will pass it as recommended by staff. Is there anyone here wishing to speak about item number one, the street renaming's in the Cedar Riverside neighborhood? Okay, I don't see anything. We will put that on the consent agenda. Item number two is a subdivision of property at 312 West 59th Street. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for item number two? Item number two, anyone? We will put that on consent as well. Item number three is Hiawatha College Prep, Northrop, at 1611 East 46th Street. Again, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for item three? If not, we will put that on consent as well. Item number four is New Horizon Academy, 3354 Penn Avenue North. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to? Okay, you want to discuss that? We will put that on our discussion agenda. That's New Horizon Academy at 3354 Penn Avenue North. And our final item is item number five, AC Hotel Minneapolis, at 401 Hennepin Avenue. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I see one, so we will put that on our discussion agenda as well. So, we have the following agenda. Items for hearing and discussion are four and five, and items for the consent agenda are items one, two, and three. Again, is there anybody wishing to speak on those items one, two, and three? Okay, no items to be continued, none to be withdrawn. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, okay. Councilmember Osami, did you want to speak briefly about one of these items?
Yes, thank you Chair Tucker and Commissioners. I just wanted to speak to the community with regards to basically thanking them for coming out and supporting this. And this means a lot to the Oromo community, to the Somali community, and to the community that lives in Cedar Riverside. I think this is the first time that these languages, and Oromo and Somali are one of the largest spoken languages in Africa. And I think this is the first time that this community, and actually is one of the two largest spoken languages in Cedar Riverside. So even more than English, people speak Oromo and Somali in that area. So I think this goes a long way to making the community members feel at home. And I'd like to thank the city staff and the Commission for putting this as a consent item. And I'd like to thank everybody for showing up today to support this. So this is going to be on consent item. There's no need for a public hearing, and once they approve it, it's done. And also, I'd like to mention that this is going to be paid for by the community as well. So all the expenses will be covered by the community. It's not going to be paid from the taxpayers' money or from the city. So that's one thing I wanted to mention as well. So again, I thank everybody for showing up. Thank the Commissioners for their support, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll now return to our business. We need to approve the agenda that we just amended, four and five discussion, one, two, and three on consent. May I have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved as our agenda. We have no committee of the whole items. We do have one action item on bylaws. Mr. Wittenberg.
Commissioners, this very brief bylaws amendment would simply formalize in your Commission bylaws that the staff will work in conjunction with the Commission to produce an annual report. As part of a recent change to the city charter, that language was removed from the city charter. And I think it was decided at your committee, the whole meeting, that that would be relocated to the Commission bylaws.
Okay, yeah, we did discuss that and had no opposition. So may I have a motion to change our bylaws as in the staff report? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, we now have one new bylaw. I might mention that that charter change also affected other parts of our bylaws, which may need to be revised in the future, but I think we can operate quite well as we are right now. Now, let's see. We'll now move to the consent agenda. I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That's, again, numbers one, two, and three. Last chance, anybody wishing to speak on items one, two, or three? Did you wish to talk about this? Are you in opposition to the name change? I think we would leave it on the consent agenda then. That's what the staff has moved and... Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing, ask for motion to approve the staff recommendations for items one, two, and three. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those items are approved. So we are done with items one, two, and three. If you were here for those items, now would be appropriate time to leave before we get into a discussion on items four and five. I wonder if I could ask the gentleman who wanted to talk about item four, was there a specific concern that you had?
[inaudible]
You can come up here if you want. Okay, thank you for getting folks out the door and closing the door. We will continue our meeting. We will turn now to item number four, the New Horizon Academy at 3354 Penn Avenue North. Staff is Hillary Dvorak. You can give a very brief report. I think the main concern was about parking associated with this project and where buses will be idling.
So this is for New Horizon Academy at 3354 Penn Avenue North. It's on the southeast corner of that intersection across Penn Avenue from an elementary school. And there are a series of applications, but as you indicated, Chair Tucker, I will just jump right to parking. They have requested a variance to go from 29 spaces down to 14. Here is the site plan for the site, Penn Avenue on the west and 34th Avenue to the north. The building does occupy this whole location, so to access the parking, one would drive under the building from 34th Avenue. That is the only curb cut to the site, and then park in one of the 14 parking spaces on site. There is a public, a Metro Transit bus stop on Penn Avenue that will stay in place. The applicant has indicated that they do, in other locations, utilize a small bus to get to and to get children to and from the site, mostly picking up and dropping off at Picking up and dropping off at area schools. So I would ask the applicant to respond to where the bus would be idling. I don't believe that the bus would be idling on site for very long, if at all. But the bus would be stored on site when not picking up or dropping off those children. As I indicated, there is a bus stop in front of the site, and the applicant, through their experience with their other center locations in the metro area, do have employees who bus to the site or take other forms of transportation, and also utilize bicycles. And then also that a lot of the parents would also be utilizing bicycles. So we are recommending approval of the applications, all of them, including the parking variance. And I'll conclude there and then stand for questions.
Okay, are there any questions, Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, I don't have a question about buses. I do have a question about the seventh condition of the site plan review. It references removing the film on the first floor windows.
Correct.
I believe that's where the stairs wrapping around the elevator. Is that the location? Do I have that correct?
Yes, there are those three windows facing the parking area that were... that had film on them. Those windows, I could show you right here, are in this location here. And so, yes, it would be stairs, however, the whole staircase is a wall of glass, and so, you know, at a certain, you know, even on this first run, there wouldn't, you could still see into the building.
Right, so my question is, the room to the west of the elevator is a storage room. And I would think that equally to the point of the condition is preventing views into the lobby from Penn Avenue. So I'm wondering if staff has discussed moving that storage room, a way to allow views through into the lobby?
We have not discussed that. It could be, you could ask the applicant tonight. I will say that their architect is out of town with a family emergency, and so, but the General Counsel for New Horizon is here tonight.
I think it just follows the same spirit of that condition, is to open the building up to the street better. Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. You can come on up, give your name and address for the record, please, and speak about your issue with this project.
My name is Stefan Waist. I live at 3403 Oliver Avenue North. It's kitty corner across the alley behind the school where they're going to build it. And I park along the, my house on 34th, there I park along there with my vehicles. I just wonder is I going to have a problem with that and parking there? And also about the school buses sitting and idling along there. Right now, the school bus stop there, and the buses come and pick people up, but they don't sit there and idle.
Okay, are there any questions from Commissioners? Not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Others wishing to speak, you name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jill Dunkley. I'm with New Horizon. And I don't live in Minneapolis, but do you still want my home address? Okay, 3240 Graham Hill Road in Orno. And just to kind of address the issues with parking and the bus. Our buses are small buses. They only bus to and from school. They, obviously, in the summer, we have field trips that we'll take the children on. We don't idle our buses unless it is extremely cold outside. We may idle it for a few moments just to keep the indoor temperature more tolerable for the young ones. In this case, because we are directly across the street from an elementary school, I don't know yet what that means with the demographics of the school-aged children that will be attending our school. If that is the same school that they go to for elementary school, it's very possible we won't even bus, and we will have our staff walk them across the street. Because they are schoolagers, we would be able to do that. So I don't know if there's any other questions.
We'll see if there are any questions from Commissioners. I don't see any, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item number four? Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have, let's see, what do we have? CUP and four variances in a site plan. Are there any motions? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you Chair Tucker. I will move approval of items A through F. Items A and C have one condition, and item F, the site plan, has seven conditions.
Okay, that's moved. Okay, moved and seconded. Do we have discussion, Commissioner Cronzer?
Yes. I'd like to add a proposal, condition number eight for item F, the site plan review. Being the applicant shall work with staff to look to the possibility of relocating the storage room that's adjacent to the stairs on the first floor, as referenced in the area referenced in condition number seven.
Can you go through that? Which, work with staff to relocate?
It's actually storeroom number 102, per the drawing A 101.
Yeah.
Adjacent to Penn Avenue.
Okay, we have that, Jason?
Is that clear enough?
And if I can just be clear, Commissioner Cronzer, that was to consider, so...
Work with staff.
Work with staff to consider.
Yeah.
So ultimately, if they conclude that that's not possible, that's the conclusion, and they'll still be in compliance with their conditions, but we want them to make a good faith effort to do that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have moved condition eight, for staff to work with the applicant on relocating a storage room. Do we have a second on that? Moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to that at all, or just...
You know, I think the intent is to open these buildings up as much to the street as possible. I think Mr. Dvorak might have a comment for us.
I think with any project, the plans have been evolving since they were submitted. And on the applicant's site plan or floor plan that she has, it's actually elevator equipment storage room. So I think, given the proximity to the elevator there, I don't know if it could move, but I can continue to work with the applicant.
It could move. Elevator rooms don't necessarily have to be directly to the next two, but I think the condition is such where it gives some flexibility, and the intent, I think, is clear, so we can...
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on adding an eighth condition? Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we add that eighth condition to item F, and we turn to the main motion to approve staff recommendation with that extra condition on all applications. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Bender, Brown, Forni, Gusselman, Cronzer, Lipke-Pier. That's six zero.
Okay, those are approved. Thank you very much. We move to our last item, the AC Hotel Minneapolis, 401 Hennepin Avenue. I need to recuse myself from participation in this item, so Vice President Brown will lead the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we can start with a presentation from staff, which is Kimberly Hollein.
Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you is a series of applications for a new nine-story hotel going in at 401 Hennepin Avenue. The applications are a conditional use permit for surface parking in the downtown parking overlay district, a conditional use permit to allow signage at the top of the building, a series of variances for signs on non-primary building walls, and one of those is also a variance to increase the height of a sign on a non-primary building wall, and then site plan review. The site is bordered by the lumber exchange to the south, the central library to the north, and a parking ramp that's currently under common ownership with the subject site to the east. The site is currently a surface parking lot, and the proposal shows the building at the corner of Fourth and Hennepin with active functions on the first floor. Those active functions include lobby, a bar/breakfast area, seating area, business area for guests, and a lounge space. There's also a library on the first floor, and then some additional amenities on the second floor. The majority of the parking for the use is going to be provided in the adjacent parking ramp, and there's a connection between the building and the parking ramp on the second floor. So that connection, garage link, comes in here. As far as the CUP for the surface parking goes, the applicant is proposing eight surface parking stalls behind the building. Because this is in the downtown parking overlay district, any surface parking requires a conditional use permit. The parking is entirely screened from Hennepin and Fourth. It's very limited in its size at only eight stalls, and therefore, it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare, and is not expected to be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the vicinity. In terms of traffic impacts, having this parking area behind the building will allow for guest drop-off behind the building. It's primarily going to be used as a valet space and short-term parking for guests, and accordingly, that will allow for vehicles to actually queue on-site instead of in the public street adjacent to the building. As far as the signage applications go, I'm just going to be brief here. I believe we only have a couple people wishing to speak on the item, and I haven't seen much correspondence in relationship to signage, so I can be more specific if you'd like. The conditional use permit for signage relates to this sign here at the top of the building. So there's one that faces west that you'll see coming down Fourth, and then there's another that faces the north on the library side that are covered under the conditional use permit. There's a third sign on that element that faces south that's actually covered under one of the variances. There's a CUP for signage, recognizing that taller buildings do have some unique identification needs. That conditional use permit only allows for two signs at the top of the building, so in this case, the third one would be covered under the variance. That third sign facing south is actually a non-primary building wall as well. So that's the one that needs the variance for a sign on a non-primary building wall and a variance for sign height. And that's from 28 feet to 120 feet. The other signs that require variances, there are these two signs here that are along the driveway. Do you need me to zoom in? Maybe? On the driveway, as you're coming from Hennepin, there are signs flanking this interior drive. You drive under the building to get to the parking area behind the building. Those are identification signs for the hotel. So there's one here, and then you can't see it in this image really, but there's another one here. I can zoom in a little bit further. And then a sign here on the east side of the building. Here. Again, this is a non-primary building wall. This sign is facing east to provide directional signage and wayfinding for guests who are parking in the adjacent ramp. This is also the only sign that people will see as pedestrians coming down fourth towards the site. And I believe that covers all of the signs on non-primary building walls. So as far as the findings go, again, there are unique identification needs here based on the use. This is a hotel catering to out-of-town guests. The signs are placed in a way that will not contribute to sign clutter. They're tasteful in scale with the overall building. And then the final application is for site plan review. I'll just touch on the items here that require alternative compliance. So on the backside of the building, facing that parking area, zoom back out, there is alternative compliance requested for a blank wall exceeding 25 feet in this location. There's also alternative compliance requested for a blank wall where the building faces the lumber exchange. That building wall won't be visible. There's a separation of only about three feet between the two buildings, so there aren't any architectural details proposed on that wall due to the limited visibility. So there's alternative compliance requested there. Staff is recommending alternative compliance for both of those instances due to the limited visibility, and then the casota stone used on the back of the building. You know, architecturally, it just seemed like it would maybe clutter up that elevation to actually break up that blank wall with an alternate material in that location. The windows on the east elevation facing the parking area also require alternative compliance. So the only window facing the parking area is this frittered glass here in the door. That doesn't count toward the minimum window requirement. And then there are no other windows on this elevation. Because it's facing a surface parking lot, there is a 30% requirement. So technically, alternative compliance is to go to zero because that frittered glass does not count. However, this is all back of house in this location, and so staff is recommending alternative compliance for that. And then no landscaping in the eight-space parking lot. If you looked at the shadow studies, you can see there isn't any sunlight that's getting in there except for maybe noon in the middle of July. So staff is recommending alternative compliance for that. The applicant is proposing street trees along Hennepin as an alternative for that requirement. So just one more thing I want to touch on here. You will see in your packets that there was some correspondence relating how this building impacts the adjacent lumber exchange, which is an individual historic landmark in the city. As I noted, there's a three-foot separation between the proposed building and the lumber exchange. The lumber exchange has windows on that north elevation. That's currently a situation that's non-conforming to building code, but those openings are allowed to remain. However, the applicant is proposing to go within three feet of that building wall. There is no requirement for a setback in the downtown districts, except where you have windows facing an interior or rear lot line, and that's on your own site. The zoning code is very intentional in that. In downtown districts, we don't require setbacks. We don't want a lot of separation between buildings. So what the applicant is proposing to do is something that's allowed as of right under the zoning code. There is no setback required. The lumber exchange, while it is an individual landmark, it's not in a district, and there aren't any design guidelines that apply to adjacent properties and how they interact with that landmark. So I'm happy to answer any questions related to that or any other elements of the site plan before you.
All right, Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I might ask the applicant to say a few words first, and then we can move on to anyone else who would like to speak. to anyone else who would like to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nate Gundrum with Mortenson Development, and we're pleased to be here today to present our development plans for our site at Fourth and Hennepin. On your screen, you'll see the existing site today. It serves currently as a surface parking lot, contains a freestanding billboard, is bordered to the south by the lumber exchange building, and to the east by the Excel parking garage. So we're excited about proposing a use that's going to create a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week hotel at this location and really add some vibrancy and some energy to this, to this intersection. We're proposing a brand by the name of AC by Marriott, and there's currently about 85 AC hotels in the world, primarily in Europe, in Spain, Italy, Portugal, and France. The first one opened in the U.S. mid-November of this past year in New Orleans. There's a second AC under construction in Miami, which will open this year. And as long as we maintain our development schedule, the AC Downtown Minneapolis will be one of the first five to open in the United States. And as I mentioned, this is a Marriott hotel brand, and Marriott's motto for AC is to feel the city. They want their hotel guests to do more than just stay at a hotel. They want them to get an experience. And we feel that this site, you know, located at the crossroads between the warehouse district, the central business district, the theater district, will allow guests of this hotel to experience all that downtown Minneapolis has to offer. This brand is unique in that it's a European lifestyle brand, so in addition to the hotel rooms, the public space on the main level and the street level will consist of an AC bar, which will serve, you know, local beers and craft cocktails, the AC lounge, which will serve small plates. They'll have a front desk, a hotel lobby, and media salons.
Sorry to interrupt, but maybe it would be best if we kind of stuck to the site plan issues. I think, for the most part, this is a pretty straightforward application, so if you don't mind just taking a minute or two and addressing some of the issues that staff raised, that would be good.
Sure. We can certainly do that. And as part of our team, we have Bruce, or I'm sorry, Trace Jacque and Bert Coffin with ESG Architects, and I'd like to invite them up to the podium to talk through the site plan.
Chair Brown, Commissioners, Bert Coffin, ESG. We'd like to just very briefly speak to kind of urban design principles. I can be very brief about this, but it's very important to us as building the city. And Trace, my colleague, would like to speak quickly, succinctly about the building design. We believe the project follows key, time-tested urban design principles, the first being this building is going to take the place of a surface parking lot. We all saw the Star Tribune editorial this morning, so we think this accomplishes a primary goal of the city of Minneapolis. This is a classic urban infill site, if there ever was one. This development will recreate the historic street definition with a nine-story building similar in height to the original building on the site, the 10-story Hotel Andrews, which was here for much of the 20th century. This is a quintessential fabric building. The building massing will complement its immediate neighbors. The new building will step down from the historic lumber exchange to the public library to the north, presenting an intermediate height between the two. The development is pedestrian-focused, and we think this is very important. There's no automobile drop-off on Hennepin or on Fourth Street. The site allows vehicles, as Ms. Hollein said, allows vehicles to pass under the building into the site for drop-off and servicing. The LRT station is only less than a block away, so we are estimating that less than half of the trips coming to this site will be by automobile. And finally, the development includes significant streetscape and public realm improvements, including new sidewalk pavement, large caliper street trees, and a continuous quality system of street lighting and opportunities for sidewalk seating at the corner. The improved public realm will be shaped by beautiful streetscape architecture, featuring oversized transparent windows looking into the public spaces of the hotel. So Trace Jacque, my colleague now, is going to speak a little bit more to the design of the building.
Evening, Commissioners. I'd like to just briefly and quickly go through the basic building design elements. The building designs responds to its immediate context by creating two complementary facades, and they differently respond to each of their adjacent contexts. The Hennepin Avenue facade is a contemporary reinterpretation of a historic warehouse facade grid. The upper floors are composed of a mix of glass, stucco, and metal panel. Based on the committee of the whole and staff feedback, we've lightened up the coloration along Hennepin. It's a little more, was more of a saturated brown. Now it's a little more neutral and a little lighter in color. And we've, like I've said, increased the banding, and there's actually some corresponding banding that feathers right through the lumber exchange facade. And then the Fourth Street facade is composed of a soft, buff-colored stucco, metal panel, and glass composition that's more animated and playful in nature. The facade responds directly to the public library across Fourth Street. Composition of this facade has been updated as well since our last visit. The tower element evokes the historic theater marquee, and there are many marquees visible up and down Hennepin, and this would be basically reinforcing that on the north end of Hennepin. It also marks the key location for the building signage as it aligns with the Fourth Street entry into downtown Minneapolis as Fourth Street grid changes at Hennepin. Our tower element or marquee element terminates that axis as you approach from the north. Let's see. That top element is the AC Hotel sign brand that Kimberly made note of, and that's a, it's a trademark element of AC Hotels to have that blue cube at the top of the building. We've decided to integrate it a little more architecturally than what's typically done. At, so, and that marquee expression extends down to above the street level and becomes a continuous canopy along Hennepin. That canopy has a theater lighting effect to it that actually goes underneath that drive-in to the back courtyard area as well. At the street level, oversized windows and stone piers provide enhanced visibility to the active uses that wrap the street sides of the main level. The main entry will be wrapped in a special material such as Abbott La Minotti to highlight its location along Hennepin. I'm going to move along through some of these images and, because, yeah, get to the interior. Okay. And I mentioned the horizontal canopy runs the length of Hennepin, providing some protection for pedestrians from the elements. First of all, articulation of high-quality glass and stone will provide an intimate connection between active indoor public spaces and outdoor public realm. These spaces, the hotel lobby, seating area, front desk, hotel bar and lounge, dining area, those will all be very transparent and connected to the street itself. What you're seeing in front of you are images of some of these properties in Europe, and they give a flavor, a nature of what this space may in fact feel like. Very custom-designed, and AC Marriott is really about, as Nate mentioned, about the place it's a part of, and in particular, the street it's a part of. So this whole nature or notion of connecting and animating and activating the street is by its very heart, part of the brand itself. So hopefully, that's very apparent in the design rendering you see before you. That's my part of this presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Forney?
We have.
Oh, no.
One more person.
Oh, okay. You're speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Acting Chair Brown and Commissioners, I'm Charlene Royce with Hess Royce &amp; Company. We're historical consultants. As staff mentioned, issues, some issues have been raised about the lumber exchange next door, and so Mortenson asked me to do some investigations about that. The lumber exchange, as staff also mentioned, is individually eligible for the National Register and also local designation, so it's not part of a historic district. So guidelines apply to that building, but not to any adjacent properties unlike in a historic district. The nomination cited two criteria, so it's significant for its history, criterion A in the National Register, and also for its architecture, criterion C. The nomination notably described only the facades along Hennepin and along Fifth. There was absolutely no mention of the other two walls of the building. Oh, there we go. I'm a historian. Thinking a little bit about primary facades and secondary facades as an architectural historian, a building like this building has four primary facades. It was designed to be seen from all over the place. A building like this building, which was actually Kitty Corner from the property that's being proposed from the hotel on Fourth and Hennepin, the Casota Block, was slammed right up next to another building, and there's a little space behind it because there's an alley, but that, that was built at the same time. It's contemporary. Like the lumber exchange, it's Richardsonian-Romanesque, so that kind of exemplifies what kind of construction was happening at the time. This is another example. This was Kitty Corner from the lumber exchange. It's the West Hotel, which was the fancy hotel. It's obviously very ornate and wonderful and enthusiastic on the Hennepin and on the Fifth facades, but then when you go around to the back, again, there's, it's not very fancy. They weren't expecting those facades to be really noticed much. Also interesting is that there's a house, you'll notice, on the left, in the left photo, which is where the Masonic Temple is. So things were changing very rapidly during this period, and density was building up very rapidly, and there was a good assumption that the buildings would just be crammed in there by jowl. This is an example of a building. It's the Caldwell Press Building in the Warehouse District that turns a corner. The facade brick is carried around the corner, and so there's obviously a little bit of deference paid to the side, but beyond that, you can see it's common brick. There's face brick on the front and around the corner. They were taking some care, at least, for those sides. This is the side of the lumber exchange that faces the development site, and as you can see, they did not bother to turn the corner here. They were, I think, pretty much assuming something would be coming up right next to them, probably equal in height. Just a little bit of history on the lumber exchange and its construction, which, as a historian, I found pretty fascinating. The yellow line outlines the site, but originally only a small portion of the building was built beside along Fifth in 1885, Long and Keys. Then, in about the late 1880s, the remainder of the site was filled out. And so, going back to this, in the right-hand photo, you can see the construction. So the initial part's done. They're starting to fill in along Hennepin Avenue, but what you also notice behind there is another building that seems to be somehow mixed into this whole thing. It's a 12-story building. It's called the Edison Electric Building, and they actually had an electric plant in there. They were generating electricity. There was a big fight during this period between alternating current and direct current. Edison was for direct current. This was an Edison outlet, so they were generating direct current electricity here, and as a result, this building was known as the Edison Building. So that's back there. Here, you can see the buildings build out a little bit more. The photo on the left, or the sandburn map on the left is a little harder to see, but I've outlined in blue the Edison Building and how it was just kind of worked into the lumber exchange building. It's hard to know how premeditated this was. I'm kind of assuming it was. It was the same architect, Long and Keys. And the map on the right is a 1940 map. It just shows the green line is a little sort of alleyway that actually separated the two buildings for the most part through at least 1940. This is when this map was done, and actually, I think it was into the 70s. This shows the completed building, and you'll notice it's gone from 10 stories to 12. So there were a couple of stories added when they expanded the building down Hennepin. There was a fire in 1891, and you can see that the buildings had two different types of construction. So the building on the right, the older building, had a lot of timber in it. That burned. When they rebuilt it, they tried to beef that up and make it as fireproof as possible. One thing I also want to point out in the photo on the right is you can see the side wall of the lumber exchange building there, and again, the buildings are very close. There's no attempt made for that side of the building to have anything particularly attractive about it. I love this photo. This is of the entrance to, I kept wondering, how did people get into the Edison Building if this other big building is in front of it? And circled in pink is where the entrance was, and that opening is, that location is still there, and you can still sort of tell that that was the entrance to get into this building that was sort of behind there. It had an address, 417 Hennepin, and it was actually listed as the Edison Building until at least 1922. I found a reference in the city directory. At one point in time, the storefront was apparently changed. You can see in the center photo, there's a little white building. That was the neighbor building. It has a billboard on top of it blocking windows in the lumber exchange. And then to the right, it looks like that opening was altered and that the arched brickwork was taken out. At some point, it was put back, probably in the early 1980s, when there was a major rehab of the building. And looking at the historic photo and then looking at the storefront that's in there today, it's similar but a little different. So it kind of makes me question how much of the interior was changed at that point. It's, they did a very nice job, but they did a number of different things during the 1980 rehab, including building a giant addition on the side of the building along Fifth. And so if the sides of the buildings are significant, this building has already lost its integrity, but I would claim that this didn't really hurt the integrity of the building. The sides are not important. At the time that the rehab was done, they brought in all sorts of things. They, this door, the revolving door is from the Commodore Hotel in New York. They put in modern single-plate windows. They got a chandelier from Cincinnati. A bunch of the railings came from London. They actually set up a brass fabricating shop in the building to reproduce a lot of the brass or to create a lot of the brass. So it's kind of like the Fauce Tower inside where it's kind of hard to tell what's original and what's not. Just another example, this is a building I worked on at 800 Hennepin, the Pence Automobile Building on the right. And you can see, it had a hotel next to it. There were lots of hotels on Hennepin. But the reason I bring this up is that Mortenson has recently constructed a hotel behind this building. I was involved in a tax credit rehab of this building. On the photo on the right, you can see a little two-story thing in the back. That was a parking garage and service garage that Pence built shortly after he built the Pence Building. This was supposedly the first parking garage in Minneapolis. But you can see that the back facade of that building is very similar to how it was before Mortenson started constructing the hotel in that location, and some beautiful shots of other non-primary facades to, again, make the point about primary and secondary. So going back to this, a big part of this side of this facade was originally the Edison Building, and the one thing that I think is interesting there that is related to the lumber exchange is the ghost sign, which is at the very top of the building that says lumber exchange. The other ghost signs, there have been a series of them over time, and they don't relate to the lumber exchange building. So thank you for letting me do my little history bit, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, and we can go to some questions. Commissioner Kronzer.
Charlene, do you happen to know the depth and location of the footings along the north wall of the lumber exchange?
As far as I can tell, we don't know that. Yeah.
So we don't know if they're protruding north of the property line?
No, the building, I think, from my understanding, the building is already north of the property line, so it's already encroaching. But I don't know. They'll find out. I didn't mention that Mortenson worked on the rehab of the St. Paul Union Depot. They're doing the Viking Stadium right now. I trust that they can handle this, whatever kind of footings happen to be under the lumber exchange. exchange. They do a monitoring program, and they make sure that nothing bad happens to buildings in the area. It's in their best interest.
Next, Commissioner Gisselman.
I had another question for you, actually. Just in your, I guess based on your experience, I think you said you're an architectural historian in your, your work in this case. I know that we have some comments in our materials, and maybe we're going to hear some other comments today just about the integrity of the lumber exchange building just being somewhat compromised, not necessarily by this development being next to it, but by how close it is, the three feet or the three-foot setback as proposed. And what's your, what's your reaction to those concerns?
I have absolutely no concerns about that. The historical pattern is to cram the buildings right, you know, cheap by jowl in there. And so, and there are plenty of examples of historic buildings with light wells about that size. In addition, the offices, I believe the offices in the lumber exchange building will still have outside windows. They'll have the front windows. They will just have somewhat restricted views on the side, so. And the windows are not historic, they're replacement windows, so. Eh.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Yes, thank you. And I do recognize Mortenson as an industry leader in construction. I do have a couple of specific questions about preconstruction surveys. Do you plan to do a preconstruction survey of the lumber exchange? Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Absolutely, yep. We will do, you know, you can point to four projects within two blocks of this site that Mortenson is taking on, the Foremark Apartment Project, the hotel at First Avenue and Eighth Street, the Mayo Clinic Square, the Viking Stadium. So that is part of our normal course of business. We will do a existing condition survey of the property, and we will do your typical vibration monitoring.
So you will do the construction monitoring as well?
Absolutely.
Excuse me. Would you be willing to make that information available to the city if they were to ask for it, both the preconstruction survey and the monitoring?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions from Commissioners, we can ask if there are any audience members who would like to speak on this item. Yes, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Matt Sherman. I'm here on behalf of the lumber exchange building. My father and I have owned and operated lumber exchange buildings since 2005. We've taken the building from 50% to almost 90% full. We've recently signed a company, Young America, to come to the building, take a full floor. We're asking for a 12- to 15-foot setback from the construction project that Mortenson's proposing here, and we feel that having a three-foot, three-foot, you know, setback is, is an ideal for either building. I think it creates, you know, it creates spaces that are dark and deep in the city that aren't exactly ideal and appealing cosmetically. So we're asking essentially for a 12- to 15-foot setback on that project from the lumber exchange building, and that's what I propose for my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lupke-Pier, you have a question for the speaker?
Yeah, I had a question for you, sir. That's okay. Just really quick, how did you arrive at a 12- to 15-foot?
It's something we've discussed. The owner of the building, Ken Sherman, and I discussed it, and it's just kind of something we felt was an adequate amount of space between the buildings. I mean, essentially, what we're looking for, at the very least, is an alleyway to allow us to bring dumpsters in and out and that sort of thing when we have projects and construction projects going on. But 12- to 15-feet was just something that my father and I came up with at the time of our conversation.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have a total of four applications before us, two conditional use permits, a variance, and a site plan review. Would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the conditional use permit A and B.
All right. We have a motion and second. Any discussion on items 5A and B? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Forney?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
And Bender?
Aye.
Six-zero.
Prove a motion to approve staff recommendations for item C variance and item D site plan review with the four stated conditions.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on items C and D? I do have one quick comment just to address the issue that the speaker raised related to the setback. A shallower setback is allowed by right in the zoning code. They're not seeking any setback variances here, so I think it is reasonable for us to approve this site plan as shown. All right. If there are no other comments, Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Forney?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Lupke-Pier?
Six-zero.
All right. Thank you. And that is the last item on our agenda this evening. Our next regular meeting is Monday, January 26th. We will meet as Committee of the Whole this Thursday, the 15th. So if there's no other business to come before us, we can adjourn. Thank you.
Ten-day full period expires next Thursday.
Got it. So the field council, that's their deadline, the field council?
Right.
Okay. We were kind of mapping that out.